Five years ago, I was speaking at a conference in Destin, Florida. And after I got done with the keynote speech, a man walked up to me and said, hey, can I give you some feedback? I said, absolutely. I love feedback. What you got? He said, your speech was good, but your intro sucked. Wow, intro sucked? I'm sorry. He said, someone that you didn't even know that well got up and just read your bio and your accomplishments. I could barely find myself paying attention. If I'm going to listen to you talk for 30 minutes, I deserve to get to know who you are from your perspective. Well, I believe that if you're going to listen to me talk for the next 30 minutes, you too deserve to get to know who I am. So here's my introduction that sucks a little bit less than the one five years ago. I grew up the son of a Methodist minister. I spent more time in church in my first 18 years of life than most people spend their entire lives. And one of the things that they don't tell you and your family about being the son of a Methodist minister is that you're going to move around a lot. I lived in five different cities across Louisiana growing up. My family's claim to fame and really only claim to fame is actually tied to Louisiana. My great grandfather was Henderson Jordan. He was the sheriff in Arcadia, Louisiana, who coordinated the assassination of Bonnie and Clyde. The first gun that I ever shot in my life was Bonnie's 12 gauge that he took out of the car that day. This is my wife, Leslie. This was actually when we were in high school. We were just friends then, and this was us at senior prom. Now, this was us in college at a date event. And soon after that date event, we started dating and then several years later got married. Now, about two and a half years ago, we found out that Leslie was pregnant with our first child. And on January 7th, 2019, Davis Henderson Erby was born. My favorite thing about Davis is that he was, not anymore, it was LSU's good luck charm. This is him and Coach O. For the first year of Davis's life, LSU did not lose a football game. And in fact, right, right after his first birthday, they played in the national championship. This was Davis at his first birthday, national championship themed, of course. Just this past summer, Davis found out, and so did we, that he was going to be a big brother. And in just a month, we've got baby boy number two coming. But I skipped ahead. So let me go back to my time at LSU. I had a phenomenal college and SIGEP experience. The day before my first day of freshman year, I joined the Louisiana Beta Chapter at LSU. And I definitely had my fair share of fun, but I got really involved at a national level. I went to every SIGEP leadership event. And I knew that if I had the opportunity to continue serving this great organization, I was going to take advantage of it. And I was fortunate enough to get an opportunity to do so as a regional director. So summer 2011, I moved up to Richmond, Virginia and trained to be the regional director for the deep south. After doing that, I thought I'd be done with SIGEP. But before I knew it, I had become SIGEP's managing director. I was managing our staff in Richmond, 240 chapters across the country, doing 150 flights a year, all while taking classes at Harvard Business School. It was a phenomenal experience, but what made the experience at SIGEP so great was the people that I met along the way. These people changed my life. There are SIGEPs that, many of them are your facilitators and other SIGEPs that you'll come across. But these are people that you will hear about all throughout tonight. I distinctly remember a conversation my wife Leslie and I had in the house in Richmond, Virginia in the fall of 2016. While we loved Richmond, I loved working at SIGEP, we knew it was time to go home. We knew it was time to start our family around friends and family and to start giving back to a state that we cared a whole lot about. And so we made the 15 hour drive from Virginia back to Louisiana. And I took a job at Emergent Method, which was a small consulting firm at the time. But as Jared mentioned, we ended up becoming one of the top 10 fastest growing consulting firms in the world. And most of that was because we got to do really cool work, work with impact. I was able to work with Louisiana's governor to lead the flood recovery and coastal restoration program. Was able to lobby for a mental health tax in Baton Rouge and lead leadership training and development programs for executives across the southeast. I thought I'd be there forever. And then an opportunity came along that I couldn't pass up. LWCC, one of the largest companies in the area, asked me to come in and overhaul their customer experience, their external brand, and start a private foundation to lead really powerful initiatives that are changing lives in our state. And so today, I want to start after that intro just by talking about a concept that my RUC facilitator, Ryan Brennan, shared with me on my very first day of RUC. He put up this image on the screen and he said, this is your consumption curve. He said, think about this, in life, there's really one thing that you can't control, you can't get more of, and that is time. That's the bottom axis there. Success is the vertical axis and define success however you want, money, impact, the fame that you achieve. And he said, your life is split up into these four phases. Most people's consumption curve looks like that bottom line, just kind of flat over time, barely going up. People that he admired, he said their consumption curve looked like that second one with huge jolts upward. And those green dots, they represented what he called career accelerators. There were moments in time, opportunities that you couldn't pass up. There were opportunities that came to you because of the hard work that you had put in, the impressions that you had made on people. And he challenged us to look for career accelerators all throughout our life. Because if we were able to do that, our consumption curve, our success would be much higher than our peers. So my question for you tonight is, will RUC be a career accelerator for you? And what I want to talk to you about tonight is how to make that possible. I want to start with just a few tips on how to maximize your RUC experience. Then I'll go into the five leadership practices in action. The five practices that Barry Posner talks about in his book and that you're going to be learning about in the coming weeks. I want to show you how they played out in my life and lessons I've learned about them. And then we'll open it up for a few minutes of Q and A. So please submit your questions along the way. The lessons that I'll share with you tonight, they come from lessons that I learned when I was in your seat. These are things that I wish I do. These are failures that I have had. And so take this advice as hindsight. These are also what I've seen from working with 9,000 chapter leaders across the country, most of them being SIGEPs. These are successes and failures that they've had. And if you're able to listen tonight and hear some of these, hopefully you can turn their failures into your successes. But most importantly for you, these are things that apply to your professional career. That's the best part about SIGEP is I think it is the absolute best training ground for professional success. And so what you're going to experience at RUC is not only going to help you on your college campus. It's going to help you when you get into boardroom. It's going to help you when you're at graduate school. It's going to help you when you're a famous doctor. What you're learning now can take you to new places the rest of your life. So here's what you can expect from me. I'm going to be honest and candid. I'm going to say some things that might rub you the wrong way or might challenge you to think differently. I'm going to tell a lot of stories because I think it's the best way to learn. But most importantly, I'm going to give you action oriented advice that you can take with you. So what I ask of you is to keep an open mind. And I want you to submit questions that we can answer throughout. But most importantly, take notes because I want these to be things that you look back on discussing your small groups and hopefully reflect on in the coming weeks and months. So maximizing RUC, just a few tips to make the most of your experience. The first one is go all in. I remember my very first day of RUC, I was the cool guy with the backwards hat, sitting in the back of the room, not saying a whole lot. Until my RUC facilitator pulled me aside three hours in and said, Seth, you're really not that cool. And no one here thinks you're cool, especially because you're not participating. You have two choices. You can continue to act like you're acting right now and you're not going to get a whole lot out of RUC. Or you can take your cool cap off and you can go all in on this experience and hope that it changes your life. That conversation changed my RUC experience. And as you'll see in a minute, it actually changed my career. So be present in these sessions, take notes, but most importantly, realize that your attitude reflects your leadership. Invest in relationships. Look, I started with those 15 slides with pictures of my life because I wanted you to get to know me. Do the same with people. Let the scholars and the mentors in your group get to know you and seek to get to know them. Through this process, I hope you build a personal board of directors. A board of directors, SIGEP has one. They advise the organization on the strategic decisions that they make. We should all have a board of directors. And I think you can find peers and mentors to be able to do just that. And don't underestimate how this experience can change your career. Let me give you a quick example. This is Ryan Brennan, who I talked about was my RUC facilitator. After RUC, he reached out and said, hey, I'm going to be in New Orleans for Mardi Gras. Why don't you come on down and have lunch with me? At that lunch, he said, look, I was impressed with you at RUC. I'd love to help you get an internship and I know a lobbyist in Baton Rouge that would love to hire you. And that was Scott Kirkpatrick. So because of Ryan, I went to go work for Scott Kirkpatrick. And I would have stayed on with Scott after college, but I wanted to go be a regional director. But we stayed in touch over the years. And when Leslie and I decided to come back to Baton Rouge, Scott was one of the first people that I reached out to. And when I was talking to Scott, he said, look, there's a young guy, Nick Spire, he just started this consulting firm. You should go talk to him. And the second that I talked to Nick, I knew that was who I wanted to work for. And working for Emergent Method changed my life because it allowed me to become one of the youngest executive officers at LWCC. Had I not impressed Ryan, had I not listened to his advice, taken off the cool cap and gone all in, I don't think I'd have the job that I'd have today. I don't think I ever would have met Scott. I definitely know I wouldn't have met Nick. Don't underestimate how this RUC experience and other interactions that you have can change your career when you approach them the right way. And then last but not least, commit to improvement. This goofy picture on the right, the right hand side of this slide is Ryan Dressler. Ryan was the guy that actually hired me to SIGEP and he was a mentor on my Quest to Greece. When we were on the Quest to Greece, it was just phenomenal experience. All throughout, you're learning about Greek theology and the origins of SIGEP. But most important, you're learning how you can transform your life to be an actual balanced man. And at the end of it, you make commitments, things that you're going to change in your life. And on the last night, you share those commitments with your fellow brothers and your mentors. Ryan called me three months after the trip and he said, hey, I just want to check in on those commitments. So what commitments? He was like, the one you told us that you would fulfill the last night of the trip. You know, what have you changed about your life? And I was ashamed to say it, but I hadn't changed much. And at that moment, he said, Seth, you said that the Quest to Greece was life changing, but clearly it's not because your life hasn't changed. And then rather harshly, he said, Seth, life is results or bullshit. Which one is it going to be? Ryan has been a mentor throughout my life and career, but that moment really stands out to me because every leadership program that I've been a part of, every learning opportunity I've had at work or my personal life, I always think, how am I going to improve because of this? Results are bullshit. So maximizing RUC, go all in, take off the cool cap, get to know the people that are around you and invest in those relationships. But most importantly, find ways that you can improve throughout this, actually make RUC a life changing experience. All right. Now I want to talk about the five leadership practices in action. I want to tell stories from my career, my personal life, my SIGEP experience that where I've seen these five practices come into play. The first one is model the way. And when I think about model the way, I think about Steve Shanklin. Steve Shanklin is a pastor and president, an orator of the golden heart, and has been a mentor, almost like a grandfather figure to me since I met him in 2008. Steve and I were in Richmond, Virginia after RUC one year, actually on a Sunday afternoon, and we were watching the World Cup. And I was sitting there listening to Scott, to Steve almost be a commentator of sorts. He knew everything about soccer. I said, Steve, I know you pretty well. I had no idea you knew so much about soccer. He said, well, I used to coach soccer. And he went on to tell this story. He said he was at a small school in Tennessee early in his career and they had an exchange program with Venezuela. And these Venezuelan students came over and they got in all kinds of trouble in their first couple of weeks in America. They weren't going to class. They were going out every night. They were getting in fights and they were a huge distraction. The president of the university wanted to do away with the exchange program. And Steve said, I have an idea. He said, I'm going to start a soccer team. And the president said, what are you talking about, Steve? He said, I've heard them talk. They all used, they all played soccer back in Venezuela. I'm going to start a soccer team here. We don't have one. And so Steve went to him and said, guys, would you be interested in playing on a soccer team? I said, yeah, absolutely. And so he would work out with him in the morning and he would do practice at night. They didn't have time to go and cause trouble in the evenings and they sure weren't going to miss class because it meant that they weren't going to play. So every day they got up, they worked out, they went to class and then they practiced. And they became so good as a team, they went on to play in a major conference tournament that the school had never even played in and went far into the playoffs. Steve modeled the way. Leaders sometimes have to get their hands dirty, roll up their sleeves and say, I'm here to work. And we'll work alongside them. He didn't force them to play soccer. He said, do you want to play soccer? He took a problem and came up with a creative solution. And here's the best part, they didn't follow Steve because he had the title coach. They followed Steve because they believed in him, because he gave them an opportunity, because he modeled the way. Ryan Holiday is one of my favorite authors. And in his book, The Obstacle is the Way, he shares this quote, "You can't be the noun without doing the verb." A lot of people want to be athletes, but they don't want to put in the athletic training that it takes to get there. A lot of people want to be musicians, but they don't want to practice countless hours a day to make it happen. A lot of people want to be leaders, but they don't have what it takes to lead. If you're going to be the noun, do the verb. Inspire shared vision. When I hear these four words, I think about JFK. JFK, in his term as presidency, set a very ambitious goal. He said that we were going to put a man on the moon. This was unheard of at the time and started this space race. Weeks after he held a press conference where he announced that, he was down in Florida at NASA and he was walking the halls. And there was a young, a young male kind of intern walking through one of the halls as he was coming through a secret service. And he went over and shook that man's hand and said, hey, I want to introduce myself. I'm the president of the United States. What do you do here? And with all the confidence in the world, that 22 year old looked the president in the eye and he said, my job here is to put the man on the moon. At that moment, JFK knew that they were going to succeed because his vision had gone all the way down to the interns at NASA. When I think about inspiring shared vision, also think about these three men. We all know the guy on the left. It's Bill Gates. Bill Gates was the president and CEO of Microsoft in the eighties, when they weren't even making computers. And his vision was to put a computer on every desktop in every home. People thought he was crazy. That dream just seemed completely unrealistic. Well, the nineties, there was a computer on every desktop in every home. The guy in the middle is Steve Jobs. Steve Jobs came out and said, I'm going to take the computer and the internet, your music device and your telephone and put it into one and it's called the iPhone. That iPhone has transformed our lives, better for worse, and transformed the marketplace. Steve Ballmer is the guy on the right. Steve was the president of Microsoft at the time when Steve Jobs said that. And Steve was quoted on the first, on the front page of the Wall Street Journal, above the fold, the day after Steve Jobs announced the iPhone by saying, the iPhone will never get traction in this market. It's not something that people want. Steve was wrong, but more importantly, Steve Ballmer failed to dream big and people forgot him. Everybody knows Bill Gates. Everybody knows Steve Jobs, but 95% of people don't know who Steve Ballmer is. So to inspire shared vision, you got to dream big, but to be remembered, you've got to dream big. Challenge the process. I've had the opportunity to lead a lot of strategic planning retreats. And at a strategic planning retreat in the past, there were, we were throwing out all type of new ideas that this company was going to tackle. And there was a man in the room that kept shooting them down. He kept saying, that's not going to work. We've always done it this other way. No way that works. We've always done it this way. And finally, another man in the room said, would you stop saying that? I said, why? He said, let me tell you a story. So when I was growing up, we had a famous, we had a famous family pot roast recipe. And I watched my mom make it one day and she cut the ends off the pot roast and threw them in the trash. I thought, mom, that's kind of weird. I mean, why would you take that good meat and throw it in the trash? She said, well, that's just the way we've always done it. That's what the recipe calls for. His grandmother was in the, was in the room. And so I said, Grandma, why does your famous recipe call for that? She said, I don't know. That's just the way we've always done it. It's the way my mom did it. His great grandmother was alive at the time, so he called her and he asked her, Grandma, we're making your famous pot roast recipe. And I feel like we're taking the ends off and throwing them in the trash for no reason. Why, why is that in the recipe? She said, it was never in the recipe. I only did that because we were so poor, we didn't have a pot big enough to fit the whole roast in. A man now looked at the guy who had not been challenging the process and said, you keep saying, no, we've always done it this way. And we're taking good meat, good ideas and throwing them in the trash for no reason. You have to challenge the why behind the what. He then went on to say, you are worth the size of the problems you solve. We can solve really small problems and it's going to get us nowhere and we're going to be forgotten. Or we can tackle those really big things. And so as you think about challenging the process in your own lives and your chapters, solve the big problems. Don't worry about the T-shirt committee or if your intramurals team is winning. Worry about being the best you can be. Speaking of the best you can be and challenging the process, I want you to think about the inner scorecard versus the external scorecard. Here's a brutal fact that we don't like to talk about. College guys, we lack self-confidence. We look for peer pressure to dictate our decisions. We care what other chapters are doing and what their opinion is of us. That's our external scorecard. I would challenge you to think about your inner scorecard. Ron Holiday, the author I talked about earlier, said this, "The key to success is making the distinction between your inner scorecard and the external one. Your potential, the absolute best you are capable of, that's the metric to measure yourself against, your own standards." Winning is not enough. People can get lucky and win. People can be jerks and win. Anyone can win. But not everyone can be the best possible version of themselves. So as you think about your chapters, what scorecard are you using? Your inner one or your external one? If it's your external one, scrap it and measure your success based on your potential, not your peers. Enable others to act. Number four. When I think about enable others to act, I think about a lesson I learned from SIGEP CEO Brian Warren. Anytime we had a difficult decision to make or anytime we wanted to start an initiative, Brian always started on the ground floor. He started with undergraduates. He would call undergraduates all across the country and he would get their opinion. He would make them a part of the initiative. Brian taught me that authorship drives ownership and ownership drives commitment. When people author something, when they're a part of it, they own it. And when they own it, they're committed to it. And when you're committed to something, you don't let it fail. So when you want to enable someone, work the halls and make them a part of it. But as you make people a part of something, I want to make, make you aware that you've got to make yourself available to people. Let me tell a quick story that illustrates that. This is Archie. Archie is one of my close friends today, but he was also someone I worked with on SIGEP staff. Archie, as you can see, approached life, stress, work differently than I did. He was creative. He was always challenging the process and sometimes he was driving me crazy. But Archie became a good friend of mine, not only in the workplace, but we spent a lot together, a lot of time together on weekends. And I'll never forget one weekend when I got a call from Archie's spouse that he had overdosed on crystal meth. That moment struck me like none had before. Here was a guy that I'd spent almost every day with for a year and had no idea that drugs were even a part of his life. I was furious. And when I finally got a chance to talk to him about it, I went to him and said, Archie, what the hell? Why didn't you come say something? I could have helped. And he looked at me and he said, Seth, I thought about it. I almost did twice. But you have so many things going on. You're managing director of fraternity and you're walking fast to meetings and you're always on your computer. And even when we hung out on the weekends, it felt like you were glued to your phone or thinking about the next problem that was going to come your way Monday. You were just so busy and I didn't want to put another thing on your plate. That moment cut through me and changed the way I approach relationships. Busy is the new stupid and busy is bullshit. Busy has become this badge of honor in our society. It's something that we brag about to say, we're busy, we're overloaded. Don't. Take it out of your vocabulary. Make yourself available to people if you want to enable them to act. When you make yourself available, you create important conversations, moments, opportunities. And you could save someone's life. Luckily, Archie is absolutely thriving today. He's a national speaker. He's got a healthy and loving family and he's got a great group of friends and I'm proud to call myself a part of it. But I'll never forget the lesson that he taught me. Don't be too busy for the people around you. Last but not least, encourage the heart. When I think about encourage the heart, I think about past grand president Chris Bittman and his inaugural speech that he gave when he came into office as grand president at Conclave several years ago. He was in the room with 1,500 SIGEPs and at a moment in his speech, he said, look around the room tonight. If you're in this room, chances are you started life on third base. And if you started life on third base, you've only got 90 feet to score. And with that, you've got a really good chance of success. But as you stand on third base, it's critically important to remember that you didn't hit a triple to get there. You were on third base because in the game of life, you were dealt the great hand or you had people in your life supporting you along the way. So it's critically important to remember to be humble. And most importantly, be grateful for the people and the opportunities that got you there. When I think about gratitude, I think about what I've learned from a mentor of mine, Andy Cunningham. Andy was Steve Jobs's publicist when he launched Macintosh. She just happened to be right place, right time, but it totally transformed her career. And she became one of the leading communication specialists in the world, has started several communications and marketing firms. I've had the opportunity to work with Andy in my, my job as chief marketing officer as we've been leading this branding overhaul and she's been helping our company do so. And so one night I was with her and I said, all right, look, I got to ask. Tell me about the important things that you learned from Steve Jobs. And she said, you know, my career is filled with lessons from Steve Jobs, but probably the most important one I learned in his last days. She said, look, the books and the rumors and what you see in the movies is true. Steve Jobs is an incredibly hard man to work for. And she went on to explain several times she, Steve actually fired her. And one time, the very last time, when she was working with him and she had her whole consulting firm supporting Apple, she said, look, Steve, I'm out. I can't do this anymore. I'm going to go take on Microsoft as a client because I can't work for you. And he dog cussed her and they went their separate ways and he didn't talk to her for 15 years. Several weeks before he died, he reached out and he said, Andy, I am sorry. He said, all along my career, I treated people poorly. I was mean, I was rude and I didn't have to be. You were one of those people and I just want you to know how proud I am of your success. She said, that was the last conversation I had with him. What I learned at his funeral and in the events afterward is that he reached out to many other people that he interacted with his career and had the same conversation. It's a pretty bold lesson from one of the most successful men in the world. He spent his last days calling people and apologizing that he didn't do enough to thank them, to be nice to them along the way. Let's learn from Steve. Let's encourage people, but more importantly, let's be nice to people and good people all throughout our leadership journey. So there you have it, the five practices. Model the way. I would challenge you to do the verb. Don't, you can't be the noun without getting your hands dirty. Inspire shared vision and dream big. Not only so you're not forgotten, but so you inspire people to come along that journey with you. And as you challenge the process, don't, don't accept the status quo. Don't accept the way that things have always been done. Challenge the why behind the what. And when you want to enable others, make them a part of the process, but to do that, you can't be too busy for them. And as you go across, along all these four practices, be humble, be grateful. Because your success is not just a product of your work, it's a product of all of the work that others have put in to get you there. So I'll end tonight, before we get into Q and A, with just one final story. Howard, Howard Thurman is one of the most successful civil rights leaders to ever be a part of our country's history. But it almost never happened. You see, Howard was living in Daytona, Florida, and at the time, in the early 1900s, there was no high school for African American boys. And so he was going to be limited at middle school, but his family knew he had tremendous potential. And so they said, look, we're going to send you to a large city in Florida because we want you to go to high school and go on to do great things. And they were so poor, but they saved up all the money they could over a summer to go put Howard on a train and send him off. And so when they dropped him at the train station, he was so excited because he saw the rest of his life in front of him. He went up and he walked up to the ticket station there and he approached a white man at the ticket counter and he said, I need a one-way ticket, please. The man looked at him and said, no, you don't have enough to get to Jacksonville. I said, what do you mean? This is the amount of money and that's what it says on the board. He said, sorry, son, you don't have enough. Move aside. In that moment, Howard did what many of us would do. Howard sat down on the train platform and started to cry. As he did that, a man walked out from the field that had been working in his overalls all day long because he heard the boy crying. And he looked at him and he said, son, what is wrong? And Howard, through his tears, went on to explain the whole story and the man looked at him. He picked him up by a shirt. He walked over to the ticket counter. He pulled several dollars out of his overalls. He bought him a train ticket. He handed it to him and he walked away back into the field, not saying a word. As Howard reflected back on his life, he said that had that moment not happened, he don't, he doesn't know if he would be where he is. He said, not only did I not even know that guy's name, he never even asked for anything in return. He was good for nothing. One of the big issues that I see with leadership is that we do things, we help people out because we want something in return. Our leadership is transactional. And so my challenge to you tonight is to be good for nothing. Do the right thing for the right reasons and expect nothing in return. Thank you for giving me 30 minutes of your time. Thank you for investing in this RUC leadership experience. And I look forward to seeing your success.
Thank you, Seth. I appreciate all those, the strong, strong stories there. I think that'll really lay the framework for, for our scholars as they move into their, their small group. Thank you, Seth. I appreciate all those the strong, strong stories there. I think that'll really lay the framework for for our scholars as they move into their their small groups throughout the next few weeks. Since we can't be face to face, what is the one thing our Ruck scholars can do to make to make sure they got the most out of their virtual Ruck experience?
Well, he asked one, I'll give two. One, I think is shut off all distractions, right? I I find myself in this virtual environment at work, finding it easier to look at my phone or pull up other work or email. Shut it all down. Turn off your phone, set it aside, go go all in on on that. The second would be get the contact information for the guys in your group and find time to catch up with them. FaceTime, call, whatever it might be outside of the session so you can get to know them. That's that's what really makes Ruck valuable is the relationships.
Yeah, you talked about the relationships there. Do you still stay in contact with some of the guys from your Ruck group?
Yeah, several of them have actually taken trips down to LSU for road games and and we are able to tailgate, go to football games together. A lot of a lot of us trade article, leadership articles today and lessons that we've learned throughout our our careers and our personal lives. And so it's many of them are are still friends.
That's great. With Simon from Drexel, he he's wondering, what does success look like to you?
When I think about that consumption curve and success on there, to me, success is the impact that you have on on someone else. It sounds so cliche, but I think we were put on this earth to make people better and to help them reach their full potential. And so for me, success is all about impact, impact I have on people and organizations.
That's awesome. Yeah, the the impact that you're able to to give after taking some of this rock content is is surely valuable. With Brooks, Brooks is actually from from LSU. He's currently an undergrad there. He's wondering, what what is the best piece of advice you've ever received and how has it changed the way you lead?
Best piece of advice I've ever received? I I think it is in bet, it's invest in relationships. I I find myself worrying about the work often and the result more than the the relationship. And and I think the the share is a good example of that. And early on in my career, I learned that not only was I not going to get anything done without relationships, I wasn't going to enjoy it. And so I think that the best, the best advice I got was just invest invest in the people around you because not only is it gonna, you're gonna get more than than you give, but it's gonna be a whole lot more fun.
Have you noticed a change in the way you lead after you received that?
Absolutely. I I think for me, leadership for the earlier part of my career was pretty transactional, you know? It was, it was about what I could do to get ahead and it became what I could do to make an impact. And I still struggle with it. It's not something that that I that I hit home run with. But it's absolutely changed the way that the way that I approach career and and personal relationships as well.
Yeah, and many scholars can appreciate the the fact that we are always looking to continue to advance our skills in in those ways. Brian from Virginia Tech, he's wondering, what has been the biggest challenge you've faced when pursuing your goals and your dreams?
Patience, probably. I I think we can plan often and we can have goals and those are good. You need to set those because I think without them you're lost. But being patient and realizing that things aren't going to happen overnight and that you're entitled to nothing. And that you have to work for it is big, but also that things aren't going to always go right and adversity is going to come. And if if 2020 is not the best example of that, I don't, I don't know what is. But I I think that the biggest challenge has just been being patient, taking adversity and seeing it as an opportunity, failing forward. And realizing that success isn't isn't built in a day.
Yeah, that is great. It is. It's always important to remember that it we're working at it every single day and you have to be relentless. Jonah from John Carroll up in up in Ohio, he's wondering, what's a a good way to involve others who are resistant to be involved, but you know, would be good for a project?
That's that's phenomenal question. So the the first step is don't, don't shy away. I I I think one of the mistakes I made as an undergraduate leader is when I saw people that were opposed to something, I just went in a different direction. And I found confirmation bias from people that believed in me. Engage them. Ask them why. Get to the root of what their adversity, I'm not their adversity, to to what their aversion to your idea is. And and make them a part of the process by listening to them. I've found that if you do that, even if you don't take their idea, even if you go in a different direction, that they they will often believe in you and respect you because you asked their their opinion. And and I'll tell you this, I've also learned that I can work with passion, even if it's against me, I can work with passion. What I can't work with is apathy. And if you find people that are passionately against you, but challenge yourself to turn that passion into to positive momentum in your direction. But set aside the apathy and don't try to change that because that that is, that's not time well spent.
Thank you. This one may hit a little close to home. We had another facilitator, Jeff Bauer. He he wanted to know, what advice do you have for Joe Burrow at this point in his leadership journey?
Well, I think the biggest thing would be get an offensive line. And if that doesn't work, then transfer to find a way to trade to to a winning team.
Great.
It's all about talent. Got to find talent.
Yes, it is. Connor from Wright State. How how do you take the word busy out of your vocabulary and make something more avail, make yourself more available to the people in your life when continuing to meet your own personal goals?
The, so in terms of taking out vocabulary, one of the things that I say when I don't get to something or I I fail to respond to people in some way manner is I just level with them and say, hey, I didn't, I didn't prioritize this. I own, I own the fact that I was working on other things, not not that I was busy. Everyone is is busy, but I try to say, I'm sorry, I I don't even. I try not to apologize unless it really was a mistake, but oftentimes I just say, look, I I didn't prioritize this and here's why. In terms of making yourself available, it comes, it comes and it's small, but it comes down to setting technology aside for me, just putting my phone up, leaving it in my pocket, leaving it in my car when I go to dinner, I hang out with people and trying to appreciate being being in the moment. And and it also comes down to active listening, not listening to someone's story to figure out what you're going to say next, but truly listening to what they're saying and and responding.
Yeah, listening to to others sure helps, not only yourself, but helps those relationships like you're talking about. Brandon from Mississippi State, he was wondering, what is your your personal why and how do you go about figuring it out?
For for me, it's it's what I said a little while ago around success. It is about impact. It's the impact that I can have. My my career decisions, my personal decisions, who I associate myself with, it is really comes down to how big of an impact can I make? I remember being on the the Quest degrees and one of the mentors, you know, when we asked him that question, he said, I want to, I want to make a major dent in the world. Like, I want to change the way people think about about life. And I always found that to be somewhat hard to wrap my head around, but but still inspirational. So for me, it's, it all comes down, my personal why is all about the the impact that I can have on on the people I care about.
That's awesome. Thank you. We have, there's just a few more here. The next one is is from another facilitator, Michael. Can you tell us a a lesson you learned about a failure you had? And how do you now approach failures and how would you encourage others who who fail?
We, I was, I was taking on a big strategic plan in in my last job when I was at Emergent Method. And I went before the board to to present and it it got voted down. I mean, six months of hard work that I had had got got voted down and it came down to they didn't believe in what I was proposing. And I was reminded of something that I learned many times before, but had clearly not stuck, which was you have to work the halls. You know, you you have to talk to people that are a part of the organization, that are part of the decision that you want to make. And you've got it, you've got to get them bought into it. And it can't be all about you and your thoughts. You've got to make it about their thoughts. And it's what Brian taught me, which is authorship drives ownership and ownership drives commitment. So that's, that's one of the the bigger, but one of many failures that that I've had. And I I think that in in terms of shifting your mindset about failure, it for me, it's been a slow process, but it's simple. When a failure happens, it's not letting your ego get the best of you and push it aside and cover it up. It's to pause and say, hey, I screwed up. What can I learn here? Like, what what can I take away? And I do that by myself, but also do it with mentors or people that I failed with and say, hey, what can we learn from this and just own the mistake? And I think when you do that as a leader, that vulnerability takes your credibility to a new level. You might see it as a weakness when in reality, I believe it's your biggest strength to be vulnerable, say you failed, and then help turn the corner about how you can, you can learn from it.
That's great. Yeah. Our our Ruck scholars here, they're going to learn a lot and likely fail along the way. I know I do myself as well. Quite often, so it is always a learning moment and that's what makes it valuable though.
Absolutely.
Next one we had here, we had Eiler from Washington State. As a new member of Sig App, a lot of other new members are back at home doing doing school online. What advice do you give to build a stronger connections to help us feel more like we're a part of the chapter?
Yeah, look, I don't, I I really feel for the guys that are going through this experience, especially the the freshmen. I mean, these are, you know, it's cliche, it's unprecedented times, but I hate that. This this experience has shifted so much due to what's going on. That said, I I told someone just yesterday, it's like, I I'm gonna hire the the freshmen and the graduates from 2020 because they've dealt with more adversity, you know, in their young, early lives than than many, many of us had. But with with to the specific question, so I think it's simple, something we talked about earlier is reach out to guys, actually get to know them as well that you can. Find ways to create those opportunities, but find ways to do things together and challenge each other. And so it can be as simple as sharing your fitness goals and finding ways to to work out with each other. Or reading a book together and finding time to discuss it. And so you're growing and challenging yourself personally and professionally. Just find ways to still connect while while you're not with each other and learn about things that are beyond surface level. Because it's it's easy to slip into surface level conversations when when you're, when you're so far apart. Get get beyond those.
Yeah. I I know that many of our our undergrads across the country all have that that experience right now, whether it is a a hybrid version or completely, completely virtual and be able to take advantage of those opportunities is still really important.
Absolutely.
With Michael from St. Joseph's University, in this time of Zoom quarantine and global pandemic, how is your view of what good leadership looks like changed?
It, it has underscored, I think, for the need for leaders to create connections. Seen a number of companies in the situ in these these times fail. And a lot of it has been because the executive teams, the CEO couldn't keep people together, couldn't find ways to create a stronger culture. They, instead of sending out, you know, an email or holding a a company wide meeting virtually, they just, they shut down. So I, for me, and what it's changed the most had, and what it's highlighted the most is just the importance of of building durable relationships. That's that's a concept that Brother Posner talks about in the Leadership Challenge. And durable means that you you rely on each other's success even when you're not together, which really kills isolation and makes you feel connected even even when you're not together. So I I think that the importance of durable relationships is huge. And the last one, I I believe in just in terms of organizations and John Skyler, who's a top marketing exec at Nike and a and a Sig App, shared this early on in COVID. He said that the Nike CEO came out and said, well, we're going to be not only fine, we're going to be great because strong organizations are built for this. They're built for this adversity. I think the same is true for Sig App. I mean, our staff, our board have done a phenomenal job, just like Ruck of finding ways to to keep people connected through through these remote times because strong organizations are built for this. So when when you find yourself down, when you find yourself, you know, feeling this adversity, be strong, find ways to get connected with people and and know that we're going to get on the other side of it.
We we share well. We're looking forward to that day as well. JP from Florida International and down in Miami, what are, or excuse me, were you always planning on being chapter president or was it a decision that you developed over time? And if so, what led to that decision?
It, it wasn't part of the plan. I think it came through engaging with Sig App, going to leadership events and seeing the passion that I had for the organization. And then I I think a lot of it actually was selfish. I thought I would grow tremendously as a leader and as a person if I was able to have that opportunity. And I I own that because it is, it is a tremendous opportunity to to grow. But I I also believe that it was driven by the 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 desire to give back to an organization that had transformed my life. And I don't think I thought the fraternity experience was going to be that when I joined. I thought it was going to be a hell of a good time and it was. But I didn't think it was going to change my personal and professional life the way that it did. And and once I realized that, I wanted to figure out how to lead it and and get back to to something that had given me so much.
Would you, if you were to go back and do it again, would you still run for chapter president?
Absolutely. 100%. The lessons that I learn in the corporate world today, I learned so many of them as chapter president because when you're a chapter president, you are, you're, you're running a small business and some of our chapters, it's it's a medium sized business. And you can't replicate that experience anywhere else on a college campus. I think it it prepares you better for life after college than than any other leadership role. So 100%.
We have, we have about five questions left and then we'll go ahead and wrap up. But the the next one coming up here is from from Niamh from Illinois Tech. How do you define productivity? And how do you ensure you're making tangible progress on something as opposed to doing less meaningful work or not moving the needle?
Yep. I would say this is another lesson that I learned from from Brian Warren, Sig App CEO. It it's defined, I believe, through the Eisenhower matrix president. Eisenhower had a a matrix that he used that where it was, it was all about urgent and important. And his belief is that seldom what we, the urgent things that we focus on are actually important. And the important things that we focus on are are actually urgent. And every day I try to define for myself before I start the day of what's urgent and important. What are those things that are are need to be done for my project, my team to to move forward? And so I I think that's, that's really the key to success of of being productive is is finding urgent and important.
The the next one we have here from one of our other facilitators, Ryan Pitzer. The Leadership Challenge recommends to to know your own leadership philosophy. What's your own leadership philosophy?
My, my own, I think about a quote that I heard not too long ago, actually, is that clarity comes from engagement. Rick Bennett, another another Sig App past grand president, said that as leaders, our our job is to create clarity, is to show our followers the way. And when we can take chaos and adversity and create clarity, it it not only motivates people, but it it shows them a clear direction. And so so much of my leadership philosophy comes down to creating, creating clarity. But I, for me, it doesn't happen with thought. It happens with engagement. It happens with with getting your hands dirty. And so I I believe that philosophy really ties to model the way, you know, the the first practice. I think without modeling the way, none of the others are really possible. None of the others really matter because people aren't bought into you. Because leadership is not about a title. Leaders don't choose leaders, followers choose leaders. And and so my thought, my leadership philosophy comes down to creating clarity through engagement and and modeling the way.
Do you have any tips or tricks for for scholars on how they can better understand their own leadership philosophy?
There's a, there's a values card exercise. I don't know if it's it's a part of the the rough virtual curriculum or not, but you can find it, you know, online or other places. But understanding what your top values are, I think is most important. And I define top values by what are the things that drive you? What are the things that you need in your life to be fulfilled? And that that to me is the best way to get to know yourself. The other, and it 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 might sound kind of dumb and and it's something that guys specifically are uncomfortable with, but journaling, reflection. I think looking back on days, on months, on years and saying, what did I learn from this is is a really powerful thing. And it's something I learned on the Quest degrees, but that reflection has has helped me find find clarity in really uncertain times.
We we have Jared from Arabian. How do you encourage creative thinking in the people you work with to ensure everyone is giving the best they have to offer?
I, I try to get my team members to approach a job like they do on day one. You know, when you get in a company, you get blinders on and you start deforming bias, bias. You know, when you get in a company, you get blinders on and you start to forming bias, biases and, and you start forming habits. That really pull away from who you were when you started the organization. And so when we start new projects, I say, day one, you don't know anything about this company. Like what, what does success look like for this project? I think that's when the best ideas emerge is when you take the, the external pressures and the things that you know to be true from being in the company and just set them aside with the organization. Set them aside and say, look, if nothing was holding us back, like what, what does perfect look like here? And, and I believe some great creative thoughts come from that.
Yeah, the, the creativity mindset is, is very important. And as you work with a, a lot of other leaders amongst your company, it probably reflects that as well. Grant from Mizzou, he was wondering, what's the first step in becoming a, a leader when you naturally tend to fall as a follower?
Followers are the best leaders. You know, as I said a second ago, leaders don't choose leaders, followers do. So I think the, the first step is that relationship piece of getting to know people, building relationships. When I, when I look at, so I, I worked with 240 chapters at SIGEP. The most influential people in the chapter often weren't the chapter president. They were the guy that didn't even hold an office. It was the follower that people believed in because of who they are and the actions that, that they made. So I think that the first step is modeling the way, doing what you say you're going to do and becoming a great, a great follower. Because people will see that as, as being a leader.
That's great. That sounds like that relates back to the, the idea of, you know, building a, building a coalition or, or working the halls a little bit as well.
Exactly, exactly.
Connor from St. Joseph's, he was wondering, how do you balance appreciating, appreciating and being content with your progress versus always striving for more? Question is, is it bad to press pause? Or should a, a leader never take their foot off the gas?
I'm from Louisiana, so I'm a little slow, so I don't agree with two-part questions. So we'll take it, we'll take it one at a time. So the first one, so keep being motivated versus being grateful. I, I find that, I find that you have to pause, especially when, when you have wins, when there are things that you accomplish or there are failures and you learn. You, you have to just pause and celebrate that. And that can be as, as something as small as just taking a moment to reflect. And that could be as something as big as rewarding yourself in, in a big way. But the, if you don't, if you don't take that time to reflect on it, then it's, it's not worth it. The end result is not worth it. Like enjoy the journey along the way. Or you, I think you're going to look back and, and be a whole lot like Steve Jobs was in his last days and regretting the way that you treated people and that you approached situations. What, I told you also, what was the second part of the question, Jared?
Is it bad to press pause or should we never let off the gas?
No, I think, I think you have to press pause to reflect, but you should never, you should never let your foot off the gas in terms of striving for what you know to, to be success. And remember, we discussed earlier as your, your inner scorecard, what, what you are best capable of. But I find that if you don't take a step back for a second, you start heading down paths that you don't even need to be on because you didn't pick your head up to see what was going on around you. So I think it's always keeping that end goal in mind, but you got to ease off the gas for a moment to, to reflect and make sure you're still headed in the right direction.
That's awesome. We've had a, a number of great questions here this evening. We're going to actually wrap up with one, one final question. It was actually from one of our facilitators, Tom Barton from Loris College. What's your biggest piece of advice for a rising leader?
So I'll, I'll answer that question with, with a story. It'll be my, my last story of the night, but it's one of my favorite stories. When, when I was growing up, I mentioned that my dad was a Methodist minister. When I was in the fourth grade, I was sitting in his office one day at University of Methodist on LSU's campus. I was doing my math homework in the corner when a woman walked in and Cindy was furious with my dad. And she was furious with my dad because he had started to pay for meals for the youth group on Sunday nights out of the church budget. And that budget was given, it was really made possible because members were donating in the offering plate each Sunday. But our youth group was filled with kids that didn't go to our church, which means their parents weren't putting money on an offering plate. She thought it was ridiculous that we were going to subsidize their meals. And so they got into a pretty heated argument back and forth. And at the climax of that argument, my dad looked at Cindy and said, what would Jesus do? And she looked at him and said, leave him out of this and stormed out of his office. Even as a fifth grader, I remember thinking, did this woman really ask my dad, a minister, to leave Jesus out of a church decision? You know, the, the biggest problem that I see is that too often, especially college fraternity men, leave their purpose, their values out of their decision-making. So the best piece of advice that I can give Ruck scholars or any leader is that when you're faced with a tough situation, remember why 12 young men came to Richmond College to start this organization. Remember what virtue diligence and brotherly love really mean. And remember how the ritual leads us to guide our life and use that to make decisions.